Now I call the meeting to order for the Board of Zoning Appeals for February 28th, 2012. We do have a quorum, there are four of the five of us here. First order of business is to approve the minutes for November 29th, 2011 for the regular meeting and January 31st, 2012 regular meeting. We do not have the November 29th regular meeting agenda, so we have a motion to defer until next month.
I'll make a motion to defer until next month.
Second.
Motion carries. Now we'll have a motion to approve the January 31st, 2012 regular meeting.
Make a motion to accept the minutes as submitted.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion carries.
Do we need a vote?
Mr. Chairman, we'll all need a vote to make it.
Okay.
On both of those.
Okay. Mr. Graham.
Aye. This is for the January 31st.
January 31st regular meeting.
Aye.
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. On the November 29th, 2011 regular meeting to be deferred, Mr. Graham.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye as well. Motion carries. Other business we have tonight is motion to nominate and elect a chairman for a one-year term. Mr. Cogger has indicated that he would like to stay on as chairman, so would anyone like to nominate him?
I'd be happy to nominate him.
I'll second.
We will carry the vote. Mr. Pollock?
Aye.
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 Aye as well. Congratulations to Mr. Cogger. Second is motion to nominate and elect a vice chairman for a one-year term. I presently hold that chair, but if anyone else would like to have it, I would be more than happy to let someone else do it for a year. If not, I will gladly accept.
Maybe we should defer and see how you do today. I would be happy to nominate you to continue in that position.
I'll second.
Take a vote on that, please. Mr. Coates?
Aye.
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 Aye as well. Thank you, guys. Okay. Other business we have tonight is a signed variance for an off-premises directory sign to be located at 100 Cheerful Place, tax map 17J, Group A, Parcel 7. It is a C2 zoning district, property owned by Carol Cook, applicant is Marvo Ods, dentist. Mr. Costanzo, could you please give us some information on that, please?
Certainly. Members of the board, we received an application for... and let me give you a little background, this is going to be somewhat confusing, I apologize. We have an applicant... we had an application for an off-premises directory sign originally to be located at Waldron and Bain. The parcel of property was... it was not easy for Dr. Ods, excuse me, to get a lease on any of the four corners there. So, he had resubmitted, I suppose, an application to have a sign on Carol Cook's property located at 100A Cheerful Place. The situation tonight, and here we are. The dentist office is right here, Carol Cook's property is right there. The sign, originally, he had wanted to have it in one of these four corners of Waldron and Bain. He was able to obtain a lease agreement with Carol Cook, whose property is right here, and he was hoping to get a sign placed there. In the final meeting that I had with him, he indicated that he just wanted his business name on the sign. And the problem that we have is that the sign variances are very specific in allowing only off-premises directory signs, which means you have to have five businesses or more. So, at this juncture, I'm not sure how Dr. Ods would like to proceed, but perhaps he can explain it better than me.
Is Dr. Ods here? Please step forward, please, state your name and address.
My name is Marvo Ods, my address is 101 Cheerful Place. I originally submitted two applications, and I always had two. One was for a directory, monumental directory sign that I was trying to have placed at the corner of Bain and Waldron Road. I couldn't get a lease agreement with the property owner of the Parker House daycare. He said he wanted to see how the property looked when you all finished doing the road. The second application was for a regular sign at the back of Carol Cook's property. I never asked for a monumental directory sign at the back of her property, I just wanted a sign with just my name there. That was it. It was simple and plain. If I could get on the corner of Bain and Waldron Road, I wanted a directory sign so that all the businesses back there could be listed on it, which is a project I've been working on for about a year and a half and have gotten nothing done. So, I'm at the point where I've just given up on that. So, I was trying to at least get my sign at the back of her corner because it's a little bit closer to Waldron Road, and maybe people can see it when they turn into the ATM of the Bank of America. The reason why I got this idea is because there are several signs around town that are not directory signs. There are businesses that have their sign, our business is one mile ahead on this road. I have pictures here to show that it's over 10 of them around the city. So, I was just asking for a sign in the back of her property. I secured a lease for a little 30-square-foot area, and I was going to stick my sign there saying Acorn Family Dentistry, our number, and an arrow pointing back to it, and that's it. So, it's not an off-premises directory sign that I'm asking to put on her property, it's just a regular sign. And the reason why I got that idea is because I went to the codes department and they told me that if you leased the land, it's not off-premises. If you own that land or you have an agreement, you can put a sign on it. And that's why I got an agreement with Carol Cook. So, that's what I thought I was trying to do.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions?
Can somebody respond to that? If you're leasing the property, do you own it? Is it not off-premises?
Well, you're not the property owner, but you do have a leasehold interest in the property during the term of the lease agreement, but you're not the owner, obviously.
Would a sign there be off your premises?
Off the... I have to rephrase that. Off the premises of what?
I guess the question is whether or not that counts as an off-premise sign. That's what you're talking about, right?
Right. I have a lease on the land, she let me do it. Now, since I have a lease on that square footage of land, I want to put a little sign on it.
Okay. I'll look at staff just for a second with respect to an off-premises interpretation under these circumstances.
Let me pull up the definitions from the sign ordinance, just so that we're all on the same page here. An off-premises sign is a sign relating to a product, service, or establishment that is not on the premises on which the sign is located. This does not include billboards or exempt civic signs.
So, it doesn't mean that if you own two pieces of property, that you can have a sign on one and a business on the other that says they should both be on the same?
On the premises of the business.
Right. It's up with billboards, correct? Wouldn't this be pretty much a billboard?
What's the definition of billboard?
No, billboard is at least 100 square feet in area, so...
All right. Is that it?
So, just go back to the sign itself. You're indicating on the application you want it five foot high and three foot wide, is that correct?
I'm sorry?
The height and width is five foot high and three feet wide.
Yeah, because originally it was going to be a banner, and they told me that I couldn't do a banner because it had to be attached to a building, but they said if it was wood and I have a lease agreement, it was fine. So, I changed it to wood, and then all of a sudden, they said I have to come in front of you all. Everything changed. So, every time I changed something, more obstacles came up, so, you know. That's fine.
The zoning presently is R2?
Aye, C2.
C2.
Do you have any drawings of what you want to put there?
No. I just have pictures of other signs that are doing exactly what I'm asking to do that's been up for about... for years. And then a new one, Narcata, that new trucking company that is right off I-24 that has a sign right when you get off the exit, and I know they don't own that land, but their sign is up and it's wood, and it has their name on it, which is exactly what I was trying to do.
Do you know if they own that property? Chris, do we know... are there variances for those signs? Are they...
I mean, as far as all the signs around town, we all know there's a gazillion illegal or grandfathered signs, so... and the sign regulations have changed a number of times, especially two years ago.
You know, on that case, what he'll need to do is if he wants to complain about the 10 or so that he does have, he needs to come in and make a formal complaint to the codes department, and we'll investigate each one individually. As far as tonight, we're not here to discuss other signs, we're here to discuss the sign that's on the property, or well, not really on the property, but the sign that he wants to put up, which will not be on his property, but, you know, he does have a lease agreement for it.
And so, I understand the sign, Kristen, would have to have five businesses on it?
Right.
It's kind of set up if you've been, you know, like in the industrial parks where you have a main entrance and there's quite a few warehouses and stuff, that's kind of why what it's there for, is that type of situation.
How many businesses are back there? When I was over there, I didn't see a lot.
Last count, I had 11 businesses that signed.
These 12 businesses all said that they, at one point, that they wanted to be on this sign.
They all thought that we were going to get a sign on the corner of Waldron and Bain Road, and that's what everybody wanted. That way, the land back there probably could sell better because we can also say land available, space available. But if you have commercial or industrial property and you don't have road frontage, it kind of hurts. But if you have a big sign there, all of a sudden, all our property value goes up. So, everybody thought it would be a good idea, and it just seemed to be too difficult. Now, I also had someone tell me that you all are going to increase the retention pond there so huge that it would be no area for me to put a sign there on the... at all. So, I would have to get agreeance from Parker House, which doesn't seem to want to work with me, and Bank of America has so many different people you got to contact that you never get a hold to the right person. So, you know, like I said, that's just... from my understanding, it's supposed to just be a deep grass retention pond when it fills up with water, but most of the time, 80% of the time, it will just be grass. So, I asked the person that came out and spoke to me, why can't we just put a sign there? It would only take up maybe a diameter of two feet for the pole, everything else is up, and she was telling me that would be impossible because it'd be on the right-of-way for the city. And I was saying, well, if they give me a... she said I have to go in front of the mayor and alderman board, I don't know. I'll worry about that when the road's done. But the area that we're talking about now, the businesses aren't really worried about that. They want to be in front of Waldron Road, Bain Drive. This was just a supplemental thing that I was going to do until the road was done and it can help with people coming into the Bank of America that could see my sign. I don't think all of the businesses would see a benefit in being right there because we would only get the Bank of America people. We want to get all of that traffic on Waldron Road.
The item he's discussing about the right-of-way is during the Waldron Road project, Bain Drive, as it is today, will be realigned to where it lines up with the Bridgestone Street across the, you know, across from it. And whenever you do this, there's going to be a little corner here that he was talking about that's going to be left over. Well, that's going to be city right-of-way. So, we can't have signs in the city right-of-way. If we did, then you'd have signs everywhere in the right-of-way. So, even though that is going to be a grassed area with a detention pond, it does have a purpose, it does have a use, there's also going to be a water line in that area, and that area is going to continue to be city right-of-way. So, that's why he's not allowed to have a sign in the city right-of-way. However, he could still work with the Parker House, or Bank of America, or Bridgestone, or, you know, or any other side of property owners that have property, he could work with him like he is working with Ms. Cook, but like he's saying, I think he's not had no luck in obtaining a lease for those properties.
Good God, if you come back to the right-of-way on Bain, do we know from the center of the road towards the Cook property, what that dimension is, as far as the right-of-way?
Or the area where he's wanting to put the sign?
No, no, no. Just that's from the center of the road to the edge of the Cook property.
You're talking about here?
Yeah.
First of all, this is not even drawn properly from my memory. This is more of a straight line. There is a little angle here, but it's not drawn accurate enough to be able to show you a lot of the right-of-way, but more than likely, I'm about positive that Bain Drive is a 50-foot right-of-way. And then, we do have a water line easement that's in this area here, because that's where the new 24-inch water line's going.
So, present C2 zoning for a building would be five lengths of 10 feet. Would that... that wouldn't interfere with our right-of-way?
I believe the biggest thing is, can he have the sign or not? And if he is allowed to have the sign, then we would, at that time, whenever he applies for the sign application, we would make sure that he is not located inside of the easement. Like I say, this drawing here, as you can see, it's a pretty good drawing to show you exactly kind of what he's wanting to do, it's just not enough detail to it to where we can put a scale on it and say he's, you know, the exact location he's putting it along with. I think someone had asked already about what style of sign and what was the sign going to look like, because that would also play into it, too.
Just throw out the board members, you know, that this is a fairly new ordinance sign that we're dealing with here tonight, so we want consistency when other... if and when other people do come up, so we'll make sure we adhere to as many of the rules as we can, whether we go for or against a sign, we want to make sure we adhere to the other signs. My concerns are the setbacks. They still adhere to the setbacks and don't impede or interfere with the city property. With the dimensions given of the 3x5, how high from the ground do you plan to put this?
Probably only three or four feet.
Three to four feet.
Like I said, originally, it was just going to be a banner, and then I discovered I couldn't do that, so it was switched to wood. So, it'll probably be just three feet off the ground, right there.
Kyle, could you put the aerial view back up?
See, it's kind of covered, that'll be... that's more straight, and this is more along the lines of what we have. Of course, this is the Bank of America property, and the sign will be somewhere right at that location here.
I know we have more drawings, because they brought some to my office that are still sitting on my desk, and I can show you what the retention pond would look like and everything.
He's talking about the roadway plans, which, since he cannot put the sign in the right-of-way, do not have any effect on this discussion whatsoever.
Any other discussion or questions?
I don't have anything else.
Mr. Coates, any questions?
I'm just trying to handle staff's concern of saying, put the sign in yes or no, and then they can work with him or to make sure that we, again, that we adhere to the rules, because we're going to have other situations like this, and we're going to need consistency. So, I think this board, if it's leaned towards or towards applicant and finding what he wants to do is to be more defined, exactly what we okay for him to do or not to do, so there's no argument with staff at a later date. I mean, obviously, we don't interfere with the right-of-way, and we know the dimension, but we want to make sure that if a motion is presented, that it's very definitive.
Also, I think it's hard to take a look at this. I think one of our requirements is we need to see a scale, what he wants to put there, regardless. So, I don't... it's a sign, and it says, "Scale drawings of the sign must be submitted."
Have you read the ordinance, sir?
I've talked thoroughly with the city planner, been working with her for two months, so I just followed what was told to me to do now. You know, that's all I can do.
I guess we need to take a vote, either to approve or deny. Do I have a motion to approve or deny?
Graham, that's on page 167, if you're...
167.
Under, right, you know, top of the page.
Page 167 of ordinance on zoning, D1 in general, it's, "Scale drawings of the sign must be submitted if the Board of Zoning Appeals may grant variance for the following reasons: To allow for an additional wall or monument sign, provided that, in the opinion of the Board of Zoning Appeals, the current or planned signage does not address the needs of the building or lot. B, to allow for an off-premises directory monument sign at the entrance of the office or industrial centers, the sign shall serve a minimum of five minutes. And C, to allow the area of height of the sign to be increased by up to 50% of the maximum height allowed." Presently, we've not seen... our requirement is, have a scale drawing must be submitted to us. So, without that, I think that the board has difficulty making a good decision. I understand your location and some of the dimensions, but I think we need to adhere to our rules and regulations. So, that Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to deny as submitted. As submitted, it been, he didn't supply all the necessary information we needed to make a decision.
Well, sir, I've been working with the city planner for two and a half months, so, I mean, if I've been... I postponed this last month due to not having everything. So, if I work closely with the person who's in charge of this, how can I submit everything if I'm not told what to do?
It's... I understand what you're saying and would understand what you say. However, these regulations that we're trying to adhere to are listed online, they're available to everybody, all citizens. And it's sometimes it's not the requirement of the staff to get all your pieces together, it's up to you as the applicant to do that. I'm not saying we're against it, I'm just saying our rules and regulations cannot allow us to approve it, in my opinion, the way it's been submitted.
But also, I was told by, I guess, several different people I've talked to over the last three months that I've been trying to get this little sign up. One person said that it's off... it's not an off-premises sign if I have a lease agreement. They said, you know, you just can't put a banner up. So, things keep changing, and they get more and more difficult, and it's just a little sign. I mean, I don't... So, are you all saying if I have a lease agreement on a land, on some land, that it's not my land, I can't put a sign on it? What can I do with that land if I have a lease agreement with it? What can I do with that land? A business can own more than one property, but he can put a sign on one of his properties saying, "Come to my other property, this is where it's at." Can I not do that?
The definition was, the business has to be on the property.
All right.
Mr. Coates, let me ask you a question. So, you proposed denying as submitted. Does that prevent a resubmission in the future? Could we defer?
Well, because you deferred last month and writing per rules and regulations, this month is here to submit it. You know, it's our right to say yea or nay. Now, he has a right to withdraw it now and get everything that's needed by our rules and regulations and come back next month. You will more than welcome to do that.
That's okay. That's all right.
So, do you want to defer or you're not...
No, no, I'm fine. You can deny it, I'll just leave it alone.
I mean, we're, again, we're just looking to get the information we need, and it's in writing.
I understand. I just, I've been through this for about a year and a half. I also went through a lot of problems when I tried to get my business there, and it just seems that was 10 years ago. And whenever I come up, I have so many problems, I have so many obstacles, that it just seems as if it's deliberate. So, if I can't win, I'm just... I'm just going to just... I'll just advertise by mailing, so I'll put a billboard up. I won't worry about the sign.
I would like to rebuttal that. I was here for your application, and we work with you, and that's why you're in business today, sir. So, all I'm just saying is just read the rules and regulations.
I'm very capable of reading, sir. I have a good education. Thank you.
Do we have a motion to deny as submitted? Or to deny altogether?
Deny as submitted. I mean, he supplied some information, but not everything that we need to make a decision.
I'd second that.
Motion carries. It's denied.
We need to make a vote.
Get a vote.
Mr. Pollock?
Aye.
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 Aye as well.
Number four on the agenda is a special exception for a training facility to be located at 209 Hazelwood Drive, tax map 17F, Group B, Parcel 3, R1 zoning district, property owned by United Steelworkers. Ms. Costanzo, please.
Yes, we, as you know from last month, the United Steelworkers, number 1055, have submitted a special exception request to build an educational training facility at 209 Hazelwood Drive, where they currently have a headquarters for their local union. Last month, the Board of Zoning Appeals asked them to please present a site plan with more details of the location of the building that they would like to put up, and do you have that in your packet in front of you? And this is an image of the site plan here as presented. It's, they're presenting a 60-by-80 training facility. I've got some images of what they... what they're proposing it to look like, right here. And as you can see from the site plan that was submitted, they are proposing to have it front at Hazelwood, slightly in the area where the existing building is already located. It's going to be in front of that, so. Go back to the site plan for you. So, essentially, there's the hall now, and so it's going to be located more in this area.
Okay. Anyone here from United Steelworkers? Come up, please, and state your name and address.
My name is Larry Odom. Address is 471 Ligon Road, Lebanon, Tennessee.
Okay. I have a question for staff. On the original aerial, is that one lot? Or three?
It's shown as one lot. That's the... that's an issue with the county property assessor. It's actually three lots, lots 65, 66, and 67 of the original subdivision, which, there, you can see on this water sewer plan.
And that's one thing that the applicant will have to do if he does get approval by this board, he will have to go in, go from a planning commission to replat the property and also do a site plan. So, this site plan you see in front of you, it'll give us the location of the building like you had asked, but we'll still have another site plan he's going to have to go through in front of planning commission. That way, he'll make sure, or we can make sure that he meets all regulations that's required by the city at that time.
The septic drain field, is this for the existing dwelling that's already...
It's the existing building.
So, it's on another lot?
It will be on another lot if this goes through. They're planning on, on the drawing you have in front of you, you'll see kind of an L-shaped, and it's not up on the...
I'm trying to get there. I got went the wrong direction.
You see right, 150-foot dimension?
We've got this right here.
That's kind of the L shape that they'll be dividing the two parcels out, so you'll end up with two parcels instead of three.
Okay. So, the two buildings will be on the same lot, in the parking lot, and the septic fields will be on Lot 65?
Two buildings will be on... they didn't get rid of all of the existing property line on 65 and 66, and they may leave 65 and 66 that way, but they're definitely splitting off and making a L shape out of... they're taking some of, I think that might be 67. They're taking part of 66 and combining with 67, so you may end up with three lots or you may end up with two, just depending on how... Which, there, you can see on this, this water sewer plan.
And that's, that's one thing that the applicant will have to do if he does get approval by this board, he'll have to go in, go in front of planning commission to replat the property and also do a site plan. So this site plan you see in front of you, it'll, it'll give us the location of the building like you had asked. But we'll still have another site plan he's gonna have to go through in front of planning commission, that way he'll make sure, or we can make sure that he meets all regulations that's required by the city at that time.
The septic drain field, is this for the existing dwelling that's already?
It's the existing building.
So it's on another lot?
It will be on another lot if, if this goes through, they're planning on, on the drawing you have in front of you, you'll see kind of an L-shaped, and it's, it's not up.
Trying to get there. I got went the wrong direction.
You see right 150-foot dimension?
Yeah.
You've got this right here.
That's kind of the L-shaped that they'll, they'll be dividing the two parcels out, so you'll end up with two parcels instead of three.
Okay. So the two buildings will be on the same lot, in the parking lot, and the separate fields will be on lot 65?
Two buildings will be on, they, they didn't get rid of all of the existing property line on 65 and 66. And they may, they may leave 65 and 66 that way, but they're, they're definitely splitting off and making an L shape out of, they're taking some of, I think that might be 67. They're taking part of 66 and combining with 67, so you may end up with three lots or you may end up with two, just depending on how they go through planning commission. But like, like I said earlier, they'll have to meet all the requirements of the planning commission at that time. So if, I think the, what you're really here for tonight is to, is the use okay? And if, if that is the case, then he'll continue forward and move to planning commission. Then we can address the items as far as the, the plat, the property lines, the setbacks, if there's any landscape buffers or anything like that that are needed, along with any site plan requirements.
Well, one thing I am concerned with, this is an R1 use, right? The dwelling that's already here is like 2,500 square foot according to the tax records. This other building that will be supposedly on the same lot after it's rerecorded and broken up, would that not be an accessory structure?
It'll, it'll be on, they'll be on two separate lots. And the, the existing structure that is there did, did go before the Board of Zoning Appeals back in the early 80s in order to locate there.
Any other questions from the Board?
Is there sewer and water running way down Hazelwood?
That's part of his requirement of going through planning commission when he does the plat. It's looking like at this point he is gonna have to do a preliminary and a final plat along with some construction plans to do a sewer line extension along Hazelwood to, to make sure he has sewer available to this property. So that is something that, even if he is allowed to do this, he still has more requirements to meet to get through planning commission.
A question for you, sir. If, if this is approved this evening, what's your timeline for putting the building on there?
Soon as we can get through our zoning appeals and then to the planning commission, it'll take 30 days to, we've already cleared the property just for enhancement purposes and got a permit for that. But it'll take them about two months to complete. And we've already met with the infrastructure people for the extending the sewer down too. We took your advice to, last time, instead of looking at the property, we had some excavating people and some infrastructure people. Look at the best place for the building, and that was the best place to tap on to the sewer. And we've already got beds and, and people ready to line up to do that work.
Kristin, for my own curiosity, is this the new building? Is it in any way in the Wadron Road overlay?
No. It's one of the few properties it's not, actually.
Any other questions?
So pre-planning, so you understand the next phases of what you have to do, a site plan and final plat and come through the planning commission? You understand, you know, and the rules and regulations you're gonna have to adhere to there?
Yes.
Just for the Board, by way of information, last time I'd asked about whether or not the use qualified for special exception and staff and Tommy agreed that it does.
Do I have a motion to approve or deny?
I'll make motion to approve the special exception, providing that the, the building is up in use within 12 months. I just don't want to leave it open.
Right, for sure.
One second.
Put that to a vote, Mr. Pollack?
Aye.
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 Aye as well. Thanks, sir.
Thank you for your time.
Third on our list of old businesses, a special exception for a recycling facility to be located at 404 Dick Buchanan Street, tax map 14, uh, 00, Group A, Parcel 13. It's an I-1 zoning district, property owned by Drew Willis Zeke. Advocate is Roy C. Mathis. Ms. Costanzo, please.
Okay. Similar to last month, we heard Mr. Mathis request for special exception to operate his recycling facility, which is Cardboard &amp; More. And the Board of Zoning Appeals asked him to please submit a site plan. We are, he is currently, let's see here. He is currently at 1501 New View, which is right about here. He is proposing to relocate to 404 Dick Buchanan right here, which will make it a, make it fronting on a much more industrial road. You can see the aerial here. We've got a lot of, well, we've got a lot of, of heavy, heavy industrial fronting Dick Buchanan and we've got a lot more residential over here, which is, currently he's right there. He would like to move to right, to that building right there, so. That is a close-up. Again, he is right here, we've got residential here and all this way. He's wanting to move to that building. And here is the site plan that is before you in your packet that he has submitted. And just a couple of, couple of photos of what's, that's looking north on Dick Buchanan. That's his property. And that's looking south towards Murphysboro Road. We've got a cabinet shop in here. And then Express Scrap Metal is directly across the street, so.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Is anyone here from the, for this, come up and be heard, sir. State your name and address.
Roy C. Mathis, 610 Sicamore Lane, LeBarn.
Anyone have any questions? So moving to the other building, you'll be totally removed from the, your original building? That the building that you're in now?
Yes, sir.
If you move to the other building, you completely be removed from the existing building?
Yes, sir. I'll be out by the end of March. I just need okay to do it.
And can you just explain a little bit about the, the business that you're in, so we understand what you, what you do?
I do cardboard, plastics, tin, aluminum. I do all of Rutherford County's plastics. I've done about 1.5 million pounds of post-consumer last year. Be on track to probably do 1.5 to 1.8 million this year. Anything you carry to the Sand Hill Convenience Center that is recyclable, that is plastic, comes into me. I've got about 13 to 1800 homes that come out of Murphysboro. Anything that's in your household that would be newspaper and magazine through a soup can that you would use that's been rinsed out, comes into me.
And would any of this recycling be done in the front of the building or actually inside the building itself?
Everything will be inside.
Everything will be inside?
If you look on there, I propose to put a fence around it to keep everything from the wind blowing, contained.
What type of fence, sir?
It's gonna be a solid panel. Anything else, it's gonna get through.
So the, the building, you, you're gonna lease the building or do you own the building?
I will be leasing it.
You'll be leasing it. Do you mind letting us know what the length of the lease is?
It's gonna be at least a three or a five year.
Three or five years.
Mr. Chairman, one thing I'd like to add on, on the fence, you'd asked what type of fences there is. When he makes an application for a fence permit, there's nothing that codes could do or anybody could do to make him put in a special type fence or a type fence that you would like unless y'all make that part of your motion. So if you're looking for, put, you know, that being something that you're wanting to consider.
Sure.
If you'll put that in your motion.
While I was asking him what type, 'cause I'm in, kinda in your business sometimes and I understand what, what goes on with the dumpsters and all that. Solid fence is a...
Maybe a metal, like the siding on the building. Something to that effect that'll be solid where that there's not gonna be able to blow through it or anything. I'm gonna have to, you know, put it into the ground a few inches on the bottom end of it to make sure nothing goes under.
Would staff have a issue with that?
No, he, he would have to, as far as location wise, he would have to make supplemental for a fence permit. Like, say, as far as the type of material and what type of sign you'd look, be looking for or if you have a height restrict, or height on the sign that you want to require, that's something you may want to put in your motion that if, if you want to allow this and you like the location of the fence, would be to say something in the motion that, of what type of fence you want, what height you want, and that they meet all regulations of codes, something, something along those lines.
How tall of a fence?
I submitted six, I believe, six or eight foot, 10 foot.
Well, that's a big jump, six, eight, or 10. Can you narrow it down for us?
I'll let y'all narrow that down for me. What size would you like?
I just will jump into that. In I-1, use is prohibited. You're not doing any incineration, burning or smelting?
No. Everything on this that I'm coming for you, all hinges on my hydraulic baler, hydraulic compaction. Everything's inside. There's sand packed around my baler just in case a line or something does blow.
Staff, are you aware of any other issues added at the previous site? There be no other complaints you were aware of?
No, actually, I think this, this move would probably satisfy the neighbors and eradicate previous complaints.
The proposal was for a six-foot fence.
I mean, he'll, he will also have to comply with, Section 4.110 does have additional standards for recycling centers.
That's right.
Which he seems to, I mean, he seems to be meeting them already. It does specify that you have to have an opaque fence at least six foot high wherever your property is adjacent to a residential or commercial zoning district. But he's gonna be fronting, he's gonna have I-1 around him, so. So he's actually going a step above as far as the fence goes.
Well, I would rather have the fence there as not to, just to contain it where there is nobody saying, "Hey, you're trash" or whatever is blowing on me.
I'm not sure what other businesses are around you, but I'm sure you have some type of pest control. Because that'll be the next issue that will, will come up. So we would like to keep that up to standard as well. Does anyone have any other questions?
I suppose my concern is, is a six-foot fence, fence high enough, that's my concern.
What would you consider permissible height?
Eight, at least eight.
Is the applicant okay with doing an eight-foot fence?
Fine.
And that would be a condition of approval?
What now?
That would be a condition of approval, that you have an eight-foot fence instead of a six?
Condition of approval being through the codes.
If you approve this, you'd have to have an eight-foot fence?
Yes.
Everyone in agreement with that?
Do we have a preference on if it's wood or metal?
That's not in the ordinance. He can do metal, he can do wood.
Any sort of what now?
Metal or wood.
You can put an additional requirement on him since it is a special exception. You can put that requirement if, if the Board so chooses. That's, that's up to y'all.
As long as it's reasonable, right?
The only metal that I have will be your soup cans. I don't buy or accept scrap metal from the public. I am on the other side of the fence there.
No, we're just trying to ascertain what type of fence. That's what we're trying to ascertain, of what type fence we can stipulate to, to make sure that it's clear to you of what's going on.
I'm with you now.
And also that that fence stays maintained.
Yes.
Being in that location, seems to be a lot of traffic and you know what'll happen eventually, somebody will run through it.
Just the, the, as presented drawing generally, just look where he's marked the proposed fence. It's not all the way around, it's just only on, on a couple of sides. Bring up the picture there, Kristin, of the, the shot of the building.
You want the site plan or?
So, so, yeah, the side view if you could. He's only indicating on the, the rear portion of the property.
Rear portion, then it joins at the rear corner?
It'll join in off the rear corner, adjacent with the cabinet shop, extend back 25 feet, come the full length of the building across and then come back up beside the loading dock. Extend about six foot out in front of the loading dock, as when we do load stuff, it does drop off and I want it contained where it's not blowing.
Okay. The, as presented the drawing, it shows on the loading ramp, it's, it's behind the loading ramp. You indicated for the loading ramp.
Yes, sir. It's supposed to be all the way up to the loading dock itself and then there'll be a six-foot portion sticking past the front of the loading dock where that I can keep it contained.
And that would be in parallel with the, of the buildings north of it? In other words, it's, it's consistent with the, with the building line?
Yes, it'll come right up beside the driveway that goes in between the two buildings.
I wonder if he doesn't need to return that back to the building on that side?
Yeah. The access to the building is where?
You've got a front access and then you've got two side doors in the rear, one on the north and one on the south side.
One north, one the south?
Yes, sir. One is facing the side of the building with the mechanic shop and the supermarket and one is facing the cabinet shop on the other side.
So on the north side, if somebody were going into the, the store there, could they see into the building or would the fence prevent them from doing that?
No, it's back to the rear.
Back to the rear. And on the south side from the cabinet shop, what can they see into? Or will they be looking onto?
If the door were open, they could see in. The reason for that design is because of the way the property line lays and we're talking with the guy that does the cabinet shop, he brings his truck in, he parks it sideways to where that he can load his cabinets finished out into it. He and I just have an agreement on how we come into 1501 through that side right there. On the cabinet shop side, the only truck that will come into it would be my box truck that would actually back up inside the building.
I just read in the outdoor storage and the acceptable materials include wooden fences, brick, concrete, or stucco walls. So I think we need to be more specific if we're moving forward with this and what type of fencing needs to be, so he understands and so does staff. So with that, I'll make a motion to accept the special exception for the recycling facility. Add in that a eight-foot fence must be erected as identified on the site plan.
With the addition of the six feet pass?
With, with, yeah, addition of six feet, so it runs in line with the other properties. So consistent with the property line of the other building. Does that make sense?
Should be solid panel?
Solid panel, wooden fence, eight, eight foot high.
Do I have a second? Do I have a second?
Second.
Take that to a vote, Mr. Pollak?
Aye.
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 Aye. Thank you, sir. Since there's been no other business, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Adjourned. This meeting called to order. Laverne Planning Commission, February 25th, 2012, regular meeting. Prop corum has been determined. Ask for approval of minutes for January 31st, 2012, regular meeting. Do you want to make a motion to accept or submit it? I have a motion to accept that submitted, do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion's been second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. First, we have old business, site plan, Hispanic Seventh Day Adventist Church addition. 1,520 square feet, property located at 271 Jefferson Pike. Tax map 18, parcel 18.01, R2 zoning district. Parcel owned by Laverne Hispanic Seventh Day Adventist Church. Staff?
As I noted at the workshop, they have asked to defer until next month.
Can we have a deferral? Next, we have final plat, Pinnacle Point Phase 3A. 2.41 acres, property located at Mudnot Drive. Tax map 32, parcel, part of parcel 24.00. R1 zoning district, parcel owned by Scott Butler. Ms. Costanza?
Mr. Butler has also asked to have this item deferred to the next meeting.
Can we have a deferral? That takes us to new business. Recommendation to the Board of Mayor and Alderman for subdivision acceptance. Center Point Distribution Park. Section 1, lots 11, 12, and 13. Resubdivision of lot 12. 135.15 acres. Property located at Center Point Drive, tax map 17, parcels 37.04, 37.05, and 37.06 respectively. I-2 zoning district, parcel owned by Ajax Turner and Crescent Resources. Ms. Costanza?
Ajax Turner and Crescent Resources have asked for subdivision acceptance. We've got the three sheets of the recorded plat up here. And this is some of the final, final images of the site as it exists. There's their building, looking from, looking from the building towards the warehouse. We've got the detention pond here. And looking down, the cul-de-sac, they've got, they've done all the improvements, it's a beautiful site. They've, they have done everything that we've asked of them, so.
All the answers have been addressed. I'll make a motion to send a favorable recommendation to the Mayor of Alderman for acceptance of the Center Park Distribution Park, Section 1, lots 11, 12, and 13.
I have a motion for a favorable recommendation, do I hear a second?
Second.
Properly second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next, we have a request for a preliminary plat extension by David Lowery. Mitchell Development Group, Waldron Business Park. 19 lots on 38.99 acres, property located at intersection of Parktonon Parkway and International Boulevard. Tax map 17, parcel 2.05. I-2 zoning district, property owned by Charles B. Mitchell Jr. Ms. Costanza?
Okay, as you can see, we did receive an email from Mr. Lowery to have the preliminary plat extended one more time. I believe this will be the fifth. It's mostly due to the economy and the Waldron Road project, so.
She might make a recommendation to accept the preliminary plat extension for Mitchell Development Group.
I have a motion for acceptance of extension, do I hear a second?
May I ask one question, are we talking about a 12-month?
Yeah, it'd be 12, sorry, you're correct, 12-month extension.
12-month extension, okay. I'll second.
Okay, I have a motion for a 12-month extension and proper second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next, we have bonds, letters, credit updates. Mr. Brown?
Mr. Chairman, there's not been many changes to the number of lots under construction or complete. We do have a couple of letter credits, both for Lake Forest Estates or in that area. One expires March 30th and the other April 15th and have been in discussion with the bank on those. Those are both being extended, so just waiting on getting that information back from the bank.
Are there any other questions from the board? Again, as usual, we'd like to thank the staff for their attention to detail. Motion, uh, meeting adjourned.